Okay, it is 7:12 on Monday, May 11th. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussain.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Present. Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present in the quorum.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone that members of council, the clerk's office, or the mayor's office wish that we keep in our thoughts as we endeavor on a moment of meditation? Seeing none, I'll just again remind folks, please keep in your thoughts those who've lost their lives to COVID-19, those battling COVID-19 in the frontline, folks that are working on our behalf to keep us safe and healthy. So please join me in a moment of meditation, and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all have to tell you, that's the most stressful part of my week. I'm sure I get that right. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we do not have the proceedings ready for approval, so we are to... by council members and the city clerk.
Very good. Are there folks with comments? Please raise your hand. Councilmember Betts.
I apologize, I was muted. I just wanted to announce that this week I will be having both a virtual happy hour tomorrow evening and a virtual coffee hour on Saturday. See my Facebook page for more details on that. It'll be 10:00 AM on Saturday and 6:00 PM, I believe, tomorrow. If you have any questions, you can also email me.
Thank you, councilmember. Others wish announcements? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to speaker registration, or I'm sorry, we're to community event announcements. Is there anyone in Zoom land from the public who has a community event that they would like to take one minute to tell us about?
I see Loretta Stanaway has unmuted her microphone, so I'm gonna call on Loretta.
Hi, I'm just reminding people that we will be at Evergreen Cemetery on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, distributing 125 free geraniums courtesy of the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries and the discount from Smooth Forest Greenhouses. We have two people that will be socially distanced, passing them out, and we rarely if ever have 10 people at a time picking up flowers, so we feel that we can go on with this event and help people prepare for the Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Stanaway. Anyone wishing to address the council, please use the raise your hand function, dial star nine on your phone, option Y on your Mac, or alt-Y on your PC. If you're using a tablet, open up your participants window and type on the raise hand function for community event announcements.
And as people are doing that, we also, after the mayor's comments, we will be moving into public comment on legislative matters, so as the mayor is speaking, you can raise your hand, as council president just indicated. We will be at public comments after the mayor's comments, so we have hearings as well as resolutions for action and an ordinance for introduction, although it's my understanding that that will be pulled from the agenda, but it's listed, it is still eligible for discussion. So with that announced, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. A few things to announce. We will have our mobile food pantry this Saturday at the Crystal Ray Church, 9:00 AM, again, the new style, drive-up, not congregating, socially distanced, volunteers assisting. So that will happen this Saturday. I've had a few questions about Memorial Day. We have not, I haven't made a decision yet on whether the event is gonna happen. I'd very much like it to happen, but we are not sure if it's allowed under the executive order, so I am seeking clarification from the governor's office, but if we don't get clarification, we may have to cancel it. The plan is to do something without the public, to do the reed layers, speakers, and have it at Little Arlington, but again, it does not seem to be an exempt activity under the executive order. I'm gonna wait as long as I can before canceling it, so hopefully in the next few days, we will let folks know. So if you're waiting on that, the answer is, we don't know yet, and we are very hopeful the governor will allow for it, or some form, and we get clarification, but, so stay tuned. I wanted to thank all the neighborhoods who applied for our neighborhood advisory board grants. They were issued on May 5th. Everybody that requested a mini grant of $200 received it, and the balance of the dollars are spread throughout the city, it's about $65,000. So I want to say great job to Delisa Fontaine, who is our interim neighborhood person, and is doing a fantastic job, and to Andy Crawford and her department, and to our 12 neighborhood advisory board members. I want everyone to know that we are now at 63% for our census reporting. Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Spitzley, I agree 100%, that is good news. We were at 67% total in 2010, we're at 63% now. We think we can eclipse our 2010, and our staff's doing a really good job with that. We have been able to make about 5,000 calls from our employees into hard-to-count areas, and it's clearly working, so that's good news. Want to remind everybody that our One Lansing campaign is still in effect, so if you go to tinyurl.com/OneLansing, you can contribute to individuals to help with mortgage and rental assistance and utilities and other things. You can help small businesses, you can help nonprofits. It's a good way to contribute if you just received $1,200 from the federal government and may not have needed it as much as others, it's a good place to contribute that. And then, you know, we're working on a variety of other things. We hope to have some parking enforcement announcements, we're navigating that, the recent executive order allowed for parking enforcement, so we are navigating that in the downtown, working with DLI, and hope to have some announcements on that in the next few days, so, and we will keep people kind of up to date as we adjust our parking enforcement. That's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for moving on. I just want to let council know to the folks that are organizing the memorial celebration, I've asked council to participate in some way, we're trying to figure out what that looks like if the ceremony goes forward, but council will be represented in some way, shape, or form. I'll let you know what it looks like, but I'm hoping that we end up being able to do that, but understand if we cannot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, it includes the resolution for action as well as the following two hearings. One, ordinance after 260 for the Lansing Housing Commission to own real property on its own name, and number two, in consideration of a noise special permit, ET McKenzie to allow work on Saturdays in the Forest Road right-of-way, and we have received a couple of written communications on those, those will be made part of the public hearing record participating in the Zoom call. Now is the time, if you haven't already, for you to raise your hand.
Mr. Clerk, before we recognize those, I think councilmember Wood had a question for the mayor, and I didn't see it until we moved on. If we could go back there real quick.
Thank you, Mr. President, and yes, I do for the mayor. There has been some articles in the news about some COVID-19 in the south end of Lansing. Is there anything that you can add to that as to how we're dealing with that, or how the Health Department is dealing with that, and what we can expect?
Sure. Councilman Garza and I have had a conversation, as he is the second ward representative. We have a fairly sizable spike in 48911, higher than most of the other zip codes, and a lot of that, and I believe the Health Department just announced this on Friday, is due to a spread within a refugee population in a kind of targeted location in 48911 down by Louisa Street. There's a refugee population there where a few people were working, my understanding is in a location that had some positives, and it spread through that community. So the numbers are actually gonna show that 50% of all of the 48911 positives are in the Asian community, it's refugee Asia, so that's where it's coming from, and we're, the Health Department, Lynda Vale has been in contact with me and our emergency management folks at the city. We are working with a lot of options there to assist, the refugee development center's involved, we're actually working on some testing sites, and when we have that, I am, I'm going to announce it, but we don't have it set up yet, but we're looking at working on a variety of options for some testing sites, some which will be targeted and some which will be broader, and then you'll see more, you know, positives, because the more testing you do, the more positives you see, but you still want to identify and do contact tracing and things like that. So the Health Department is on top of it, they are working closely with us, with our emergency management folks, with county emergency management folks, and talking to folks within the neighborhood, talking to folks who are within the affected community to make sure that it doesn't spread. But it was, the numbers were high, and it was surprising, but when they drilled down, they were able to identify the reasoning, and now they're acting on that, again, working with me, with our fire department, emergency management, William Englerter and his folks, and we're on top of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we move on, I see like five more questions, so you inspired some activity discussion. So, councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and yes, thank you for contacting me when I came out and then let me know and let me know what's happening in my ward. By any chance, are you able to share the number of the people that you said is a large number?
It's on the Health Department website. If you go to, I don't know it offhand, if you go to the Ingham County, if you Google Ingham County Health Department, they have a, like a PowerPoint that they put up either daily or every other day that updates the number, and they've got it, they've got ranges, it's like a 10 to 15, 15 to 20, 25 to 30, it's got a range, and it's there. I don't know what it is offhand, but you can Google that and go there and see it. But again, you'll see, you know, 48823, you'll see for a while, 48911, and with the southern zip code from that, we're both together, and then 4811, 48911 just spiked, and all of a sudden, it was having a lot more cases, and again, when they drilled down, they were able to figure out the reasoning, but it's on their website, I just don't know it offhand.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Hussain, and then councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah, just very quickly, and I appreciate Councilwoman Wood initiating the conversation. I actually had a couple of questions, and I think, Mayor Schorr, you almost answered them, but specifically, when we talk about, you know, these areas that are seeing these spikes, are we, do we know if we're actually targeting those areas in terms of knock-and-talks, in terms of the actual dissemination of PPE, personal protective equipment, masks, things of that nature, because we do know that that's one of obviously the issues in some of our Asian populations throughout South Lansing. What specifically are we doing, and are we doing it with some measure of urgency? I know that Lynda Vale is scheduled to update the commissioners tomorrow, so I have a call into South Lansing-specific county commissioners, but is there anything that you can provide to us before that, in terms of what they're actually doing to get out there, and, you know, is there a concerted public information campaign in those neighborhoods? What are they doing?
Yeah, our health director's leading, the health director's leading most of that, so it's a conversation that you want to have with Lynda Vale, give her about 20 minutes, and she'll go through all of it. So that's, if she's updating the commissioners tomorrow, pay attention, we follow her lead when it comes to the health information of what to get out and when, you know, we follow their lead with masks and PPE. There's only so much PPE we have for our first responders and for hospitals and for the businesses that are coming back online, so there's only so much that we can provide, and we do our best to provide it. A lot of people are kind of developing their own masks, and there's a lot of that going on. So our folks are involved, they give it when they can, you know, I had a request from Meals on Wheels a few weeks ago, and we were able to work with them to get them some PPE. So William Englerter, he directs all of the PPE distribution that we have, but again, we, you know, our N95 masks are going to our healthcare and our first responders, you know, we're getting surgical mask contributions, and we're buying everything we can, but a lot of people are getting PPE from all different places. So we give what we can to who we can, and the Health Department really leads the communications response. Again, the contract, the contact tracing, which is challenging, because it's very, very staff-intensive to do contact tracing, and she has limited staff, and we have limited staff to provide to that, so there's plans being generated for that. We're trying to do a lot more testing, and the state is working with us on that, so we're in conversations with the state, so a lot of that is in progress, but, you know, maybe next Monday, you want to invite Lynda Vale to give you kind of a briefing, and she can give you a very updated update, and again, we and every other city and township and county in the region, and we all follow her lead. She has been fantastic to work with.
President Spatafor, I would just, I would urge you to reach out to Lynda Vale, and maybe we can have her, I certainly don't want to cut into the budget conversation during committee of the whole, but maybe she could present during special presentations. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great idea, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Spitzley, and then we're gonna move on to public comment.
And thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I think one of the concerns I have is, you know, we've had, you know, reports, and not in Lansing, I don't believe, you know, of retaliation against a certain ethnic group or population, and so it concerns me that that's been in the paper, and so I don't know what we can do to help that group, but I would, you know, hopefully, we can reach out, and as Adam said, we as a city of Lansing, you know, do whatever we can to educate them and make sure that, you know, that they're safe.
Yeah, and to be fair, and I didn't answer that part of Adam's question, I guess, you know, we're doing, we're doing that with the folks that are exposed, and when I say Asian community, people, you say Asian community, people think, you know, Chinese, it's actually the refugees of Southeast Asia, and I can't, I can't tell you who Burmese, or I can't tell you who it is, but, you know, it's, in terms of, we are, you know, we're Lansing, so we support, you know, we're diverse, we've heard no instances of, you know, chaming or anything like that, and that's what I expect from our people, and I'm glad that we haven't had to push back and yell at anybody for doing the wrong thing, but it is challenging when you have some of these refugee communities who, you know, they are, they're multi-generational, you know, the grandparents and the parents and the kids live together, and honestly, it's nice, right? When we tell people, you know, it takes a village, this is our, the comment we've been saying for years now, right? It takes a village, it's the old adage. Well, now, putting the village together is actually concerning, so it's almost trying to change generational tendencies, and when you had a few people that worked in a job in a, you know, in a distribution center where it was a tight space, you know, months ago, and several people got it, and then it all spread, it's a challenge, so you have to try and work with folks to say, you know, you are infected, you have to stay away from your family. It's definitely a challenge, but again, our, you know, I know our emergency management folks, our fire folks, our police officers, and everyone who are out there, county, all of their Health Department folks, and they're all, they're all working on it, you know, it extends into Northern Holt also, when you're in 48911, so this isn't just Lansing, this is, you know, the borders, we all know this, right? Borders are, it may, Willoughby may be a border, but doesn't stop when you cross the border, so it's into Northern Holt also, and we're all working together to try and have that conversation, so it doesn't spread any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've never heard of Northern Holt, I look forward to visiting someday.
There's not a lot there.
Looks like we have for public comment, Mr. Clerk, I don't know, I forgot who runs this part of it, but we do have Laura Stanaway's hand up.
Okay.
Okay, first thing I'd like to request is to turn up the volume, I've got my phone on full speaker, and you guys are so soft-spoken, I'm holding the phone to my ear to hear you, so please turn the volume up. My comment is in relation to the amendments or motions or whatever to change the name of City Market Drive, and I would say, this is the last in a long line of atrocious indignities designed to effectively erase the existence of this historic and dedicated city-owned parkland in City Market. If you're going to insist on renaming it, at least have the integrity to call it what it has been and what it is, the Gillespie Group grab, or at the very least, name it Marketplace Drive, because that is actually what it serves. It doesn't serve the public, and it doesn't have a future to serve the public, so call it what it is.
Was there anyone else? I don't see any other hands. Okay, then we are to council consider, we are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one is ordinance for the Lansing Housing Commission.
Yeah, did we want to go over them real quick, or we skipped that part, are we good? Councilmember Spitzley and Hussain, did you want to give a little introduction on either of those, or are we good just referring them back to Cal? We had quite a lengthy discussion about them.
Yeah, it's up to you. I think we, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Hussain, we just kind of give a brief splat about it and then move on.
It's up to you, President Spatafor.
Yeah, why don't you issue real quick, just before we reform, Mr. Clerk, sorry about that. Councilmember Spitzley, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So what we have before us is an ordinance that would allow the Lansing Housing Commission, which would allow the mechanism to transfer ownership of 221 scattered sites or individual homes, the four larger apartment complexes that have 527 units over to the Lansing Housing Commission, be a quick claim, be, right now, the ordinance does not, right now, the ordinance basically allows, says that the properties are owned by the city of Lansing, and so this ordinance would allow that mechanism. They came to us with this because they are, the Lansing Housing Commission is planning on going through what's called the RAD process, the Rental Assistance Demonstration Process, to redevelop or rework the sites in Lansing, and so as part of that, as we were going through the ordinance, we noticed that there were some other things in the ordinance that needed to be cleaned up as well, and so, but the main focus of this is to allow a mechanism by which the transfer, the ownership of those sites to the Lansing Housing Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that'll go back to the committee of the whole.
Okay, and then the noise special permit for ET McKenzie.
Vice President Hussain.
Sure, so the Public Service Department is partnering with McLaren, as well as the Lansing Board of Water and Light, to construct underground utility improvements in the Forest Road right-of-way, and so that deals with water main, it deals with sanitary sewer. The utility improvements, I think they're, it's at an average of some 18 feet below ground, so it will necessitate complete removal of the roadway and full closure to vehicular traffic on Forest Road. The contractor in this case is ET McKenzie, they are requesting a waiver from our noise ordinance, starting on May 16th through September 19th, and this would be on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and the purpose of the request is, in order to keep the project on schedule, to limit the amount of time traffic will be detoured, as well as limiting the amount of time that local access to property owners is impacted.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're dealing with that issue this evening, so we won't be referring that back to committee.
All right, then we are to the resolution for action. Our first resolution is one introduced by...
Yes, so the resolution in front of us is a resolution that you've all seen in various forms, but this one extends the state of emergency for the city to June 8th, or whenever the mayor terminates it, whichever is first, because we meet again on the 18th, our current order expires on the 15th. It didn't feel necessary to extend it for three days, so we're extending it to the Monday of our next council meeting after the 18th, with the full understanding that if the state of emergency needs to be eliminated, the mayor can do so through executive action. However, the state of emergency is different than the state home order, is different than the employees' work-from-home order. This is about resources and having us be under a state of emergency so that we can access FEMA dollars and other things like that, so the date is not as important that it ends sooner, rather that we have enough time so that we're not having to call special council meetings to extend it. We've gained a lot more understanding of the state of emergency over the last month and a half, nine weeks or so, so that's why you're seeing a longer period than the governor's stay-home, stay-safe order, or her state of emergency. I fully expect the governor to extend her state of emergency on the 28th, which would comply with one of the Emergency Management Acts, but that's why we're looking at a resolution extending it to June 8th, that is our next council meeting after the 18th. So I would ask for Vice President Hussain to make that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there a discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
On adoption of the resolution, councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussain.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA 008, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the Committee on Personnel.
Sure, thank you. Vice President Hussain.
Sure, I first want to thank councilmembers Wood, Garza, and Spatafor. This is a committee that does not necessarily have to meet year in and year out, and this committee has been very, very active this year. I also want to thank Human Resources, they've kind of served as the guide on our side through the process. You all are aware that our former administrative assistant took another position with the city of Lansing in her last day, I believe, in our office was January 17th, so this particular position, administrative assistant, has been vacant dating back to January 18th. We were already operating really out of skeleton crew. Council has two employees, we also have an internal auditor position that is housed on the 10th floor as well. That being said, that position was also vacated, and I believe that was February 20th, so we really have been operating with a skeleton crew, you know, probably the last several years, and that has been even more of an issue this year. That said, we entered into a contract for services with a Ms. Renee Richmond, she was working 20 hours a week, we entered in that contract on February 17th, in order to keep the business of city council moving forward. We then, the personnel committee posted a posting, sorry, for this particular position on February 24th, that closed on March 6th. We had over 44 people, we were pleased, obviously, we had over 44 people that applied for that particular position. Our office manager, Sherry Bolk, was able to pare that down to the top 12 applications, and the President Spatafor and myself pared that down to five. Our intention was to then move forward with testing, interviewing, we were set to interview, I believe it was March 27th, and then obviously, we had COVID-19, and we had the response plan that was put in place, which really interrupted the process. That said, Ms. Renee Richmond, who was on contract at the time, and is still on contract, it was very clear, when we looked at her application, when we looked at job experience, she really rose to the top of the heap, and so what we decided as a committee was to move forward with an interview of Ms. Renee Richmond, and I believe we held that via Zoom on April 9th, and it was the understanding of the committee that if the interview went well, if the testing was passed, that we would move forward with the recommendation to hire Ms. Renee Richmond, if not, then we would reengage the interview and application process. That said, we did conduct the interview on April 9th, and the testing was done, Ms. Renee Richmond excelled at both, and just to give you a little bit of background in terms of who the committee is recommending for appointment, Ms. Renee Richmond did study computer applications at Lansing Community College and business management at Davenport. Professionally, she has served with distinction as a receptionist, a customer support associate, a human resource representative, and client relations manager, and most recently, as an administrative assistant for both the treasury and the city council on contract through Personnel World. Renee did move away from Lansing for a period of time, she has extensive work history in her time away from Lansing, but she did move back to be with family. It was asked of her whether or not she views this as a long-term situation, and she responded with an emphatic yes. Uh, it was asked of her whether or not, uh, she views this as a long-term, uh, situation, and she responded with an emphatic yes. Uh, we talked at length about her approach in the, uh, interview to work completion, uh, project prioritization, um, customer relations and the like. And due to, you know, the unique nature of her being in a contracted position, she was able to talk about a lot of the things that she's already done, uh, within our office. You know, that's, that was kind of the central focus of her answers and we really appreciated that aspect. Um, again, it was an exceptional interview. So on April 9th, the Personnel Committee did unanimously vote to offer, uh, Renee, uh, the position. She would have begun, um, had we went through the process and had this body, uh, approved the appointment, she would have begun on May 4th. Uh, we, um, had an agreement as a, as a committee, uh, that we would extend the contract because of COVID-19 and because of, uh, the freeze on hiring and things of that nature. And her contract, uh, is set to expire today. Uh, and so what we are again recommending, uh, is that Renee, uh, is, is hired by this body, uh, and that her, uh, position would start, uh, tomorrow. And so with that being said, I would move the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Are there folks that wish to address the appointment, um, beyond what Vice President Hussein has already, um, spelled out? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On adoption of the resolution, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to the Committee of the Whole.
Sure. Before we move on though, I know Renee is on the phone, so I just wanted to congratulate her on her appointment by council and we will see you, uh, we'll talk to you tomorrow with, with details. So thanks for being here this evening. Uh, Committee of the Whole, Vice President Hussein.
So, uh, because we already discussed it, I would move the noise special permit for ET McKenzie Company, uh, requesting an allowance of work on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, uh, for the period of May 16th through September 19th.
Thank you. Um, and, um, that begins on May 16th, which is this weekend. Just so, that's why we're doing it today. Yeah, we have had a few, um, discussion points on this already, so, um, that's why we're moving it this evening. Any further discussion besides that, which was had at Committee of the Whole and during the public hearing? Seeing none, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA zero nays, the resolution is adopted. And it's my understanding the other one, uh, has not been reported from committee yet. And we are not taking up the, for introduction, it's also not come out of committee. So we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. If there's anyone, um, that would like to address city council on any city government related matters, uh, please raise your hand, uh, in the ways we discussed before. Uh, and while you are getting ready to make your public comment, we will, uh, proceed with reports of city officers, boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, uh, President Spatafor.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Um, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Uh, on the referrals, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA zero nays, the motion is adopted. So we have a letter from the city clerk regarding the polling place, a temporary relocation of Ward 3, Precinct 24 and Ward 3, Precinct 25 to the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center for the August 4th, 2020 primary election.
That's going to the Committee of the Whole and we will be taking that up next week at council as well, folks. So please make sure to note that, um, that we'll be moving, make, taking that action, move those polling places so that the clerk can get out notice to the voters.
Thank you. Uh, we are to remarks by council members.
I see no members from the council. Okay. So just as a reminder, um, I'm going to, um, take a look at the schedule with Vice President Hussein and Sherry, um, and work with Shelby, um, and Judy Kahler to see, um, and the mayor's office, obviously, about a special committee of the whole meeting this week, um, to continue our discussions with the budget. If you do have questions that you already know you have, please forward them to Sherry and me or directly to Shelby or Jake, um, so that we can make sure they're answered during the presentation. Um, and then on Monday, we will adopt, um, our formal budget and send it on to the city council and then, um, send it on to the mayor's office. And, uh, as we've recognized several times, this budget may need to be amended as soon as June, July or August. But we are going to have to get, we have to, we have to do our homework and get it done by May 18th per the charter. So we're going to, we're going to press forward with that plan. Um, and just, I guess, while we're still talking about it, um, there is a possibility that if, so, uh, large gatherings are allowed in the future, we may do budget hearings as a council after the budget's adopted, just to let people know what's in it. But I don't know that that's true or not, just something that we floated as an idea. So I will stop talking now and move on, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Uh, we have additional remarks.
Mr. Mayor? Nope. All right.
No. Okay. Then we are to the public comments.
I see the Honorable Cynthia Ward has her hand up, so I'm going to unmute her and, uh, Judge Ward, if you want to start your video, you can. If not, we, we have three minutes and we will let you know when your time's up.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Um, I'm Cynthia Ward, 54A District Court Judge, and I live in the fourth ward of Lansing. I wanted to make sure that city council is aware, as well as the viewers are aware, that while our court is closed, except for essential services, we are conducting criminal misdemeanor cases and our civil cases with the exception of land or tenant cases by Zoom. And those matters are live streamed on YouTube to allow for public and media access. So if you go to the court's website at 54adistrictcourt.com, you will see a listing of all the judges and you can click on the link to their YouTube channel so that you can view the court proceedings while our court building is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Looks like that's it for public comment, Mr. Clerk. Nope, you're, you're muted. Hold on. There we go.
If that's all our public comment, we are done.
All right. It is 7:50 PM and this meeting of the Lansing City Council is adjourned.